We have two items on the agenda that I'm aware of, a sign appeal and a variance request. Is there any other business we need to add at this time, Craig?
No, there isn't.
Do you want to go ahead and walk us through the two items?
Do you want to do the meeting minutes first?
I guess we probably ought to do that. Is there any additions or corrections to the minutes from last meeting?
I would just note in the last paragraph that Commissioner Kimes, he at the end of his name is missing, just a spelling error. But otherwise, no.
Good. I didn't get, was there a change?
Not anything substantial. There's just the spelling of Commissioner Kimes' name in the last paragraph.
Can I have a motion to approve them as amended?
So move.
And a second? Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Bremer and a second by Mr. Kime. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Now, do you want to walk us through the sign appeal?
The, this sign appeal action is actually a petition submitted by Hibbett Sports and Precision Signs of Austin. Hibbett Sports, and if you look on the monitor, I've identified on the survey, you know, at least addressing surrounding land uses, this development is located in one of the outlots in front of the Walmart Supercenter, right along Eighteenth Avenue Northwest. If you look at the surrounding land uses, there's actually to the east and west, a combination of both commercial properties and also some residential. Looking to the west, there's, and it's not shown here, but the, there's a new AutoZone store located in this location, and then there's the Oaks condominiums that are kind of to the west of that and to the northwest. North and south are completely a commercial development of a B2 community business district. And if you look at the northeast or easterly direction, there is a retail strip center located along Eighth Street Northwest and also the Cottage Homesteads condominiums. One thing I'd like to point out is with this condominium development, when the retail development occurred to the west of that facility, there was a condition placed where there's actually an earth berm that provides a buffer between the retail or the commercial development and the condominium development. On top of the earth berm, there's, I think, two or three rows of coniferous trees that run all the way to the north boundary of the strip center, down to the AutoZone parts store. But I just thought that was an important thing to note as far as any offensive things that could be created by this proposed sign. So taking a little closer look at the site here, this is a detailed layout of the entire development site. Actually, the first phase of this retail center is the southerly portion of the building, and what's being added on here is the northerly portion, which, there's a smaller section here consisting of about 1,600 square feet as a tenant lease space, and the Hibbett Sports will be in this larger tenant space. Actually, two signs proposed for the facility addition. Sign number one, which will face the west, and that abuts a public roadway, which is the main drive into Walmart. And the proposed sign, which is on the east exterior wall, is not in compliance with our zoning ordinance, being that it does not directly face a public roadway. Just to the east of this is the Community Bank Facility, or I think it's, is it Eastwood Bank now? That's what it's been changed to. The illustration shown here is an elevation of the east exterior wall. There's actually two separate signs, one having the dimension of, I believe it's, now I've got it written right here. Now, it's a total of 31 feet, 1 inches by 42 inches, which gives you sign face square footage if you consolidate those two signs to 122.85 square feet. And the wall coverage, exterior wall coverage for just that tenant space is 9.9 percent. There's other provisions or maximum coverage provisions in our sign code that limits signage that's installed on both the side and the rears of building to 10 percent. If you look at the west exterior wall, that maximum sign face area, which is in compliance, is 160 square feet, which gives you a wall coverage of 12.9 percent. This provision is in relation to Section 4.50, Schedule Number 4, 1B, that limits facial wall signs in this district to be erected on exterior walls facing public streets or alleys. There has been some discussion on the council level if there should be some consideration in amending this ordinance. It's not currently amended, but there's some positions by the council members that, you know, this type of sign should be permitted. And I guess my thoughts as far as having this ordinance the way it is, you know, a lot of it hinges on surrounding land uses and the conditions or buffers or screens and how it could be, I don't think it's really an offensive thing to adjacent commercial buildings, but I think there are times, we have a lot of commercial districts that are contiguous to residential districts where this type of sign could be offensive to those zoning classifications.
Craig, is this, is this lighted sign? Did I read this one?
It is illuminated, yes.
So on both, both sides, east and west would be illuminated?
Yes.
All the time, or, or is it just during business hours?
That, we have a representative here from the Precision Signs. She could probably answer that question.
I, obviously go back.
Are there any other questions?
Any other questions for, okay. Could you give us your name and address for the record, please?
Becky Bloom, B-L-U-H-M. My address is 2116 Second Drive Northeast. And what we do then is just go back to the company we're doing this for and tell them that the provision is either a time clock, so it's only on during certain hours, or the photo eye, so it comes on at dusk and goes off at dawn, whichever one the commission wants. We just don't give them a choice, I guess.
So Craig, do you think, would this be visible then in that pass, the screening, I'll call it, that we have for the Oak?
I think with the, the berm and the coniferous trees that are on top of the berm would provide a buffer. I've been back there a number of times due to some other issues, and it's, I mean, if you're standing on the south parking lot of the retail strip center that's along Eighth Street, you can hardly see the, the condominiums to the east.
Does anybody recall if there are, there are lights on in that area 24/7? Isn't there, like, all night long?
There's some signage, that is, yes.
In that area, yeah, already existing.
I'm going to assume that if we, if we approve this one, we're probably going to have all the other tenants coming along and asking for the same thing.
You know, I, there are, there's actually AT&amp;T store there, and they, I don't, do they have a, I don't think they have a sign on the?
The sign on Eighteenth and the sign on the west. And as far as I know, there's been no talk about putting one in the back.
There's also a freestanding sign that's kind of in the southwest corner of the site. AT&amp;T and the tanning salon either have signage, they're, all their signage is on exterior walls facing a public roadway. There's only currently one vacant lease space in this newer portion of the building. We've had some, I mean, and I'm not trying to tell you to compare one to the other, the, what used to be the Double K Specialty, they've kind of redeveloped that whole building in different layouts, and actually, the Vet Clinic moved to the southeast corner of that building and didn't have any wall space that would face a public roadway, so they had went through the same appeals process, and I personally think it's a good ordinance to have because you have a lot of different land uses that can come into play when considering whether you want to approve this or not.
I'm assuming also that the landowners adjacent to this were notified of this, too?
For this type of action, there isn't, you know, a notification, no.
Is the color of the proposed sign going to be the color that's in the example? Will it be red lettering? Okay. I think, like, some of the businesses that, that have the white, that light seems to carry or travel, whereas, you know, if it's kind of a dull, you know, dull or red like this, I think it'll?
The one thing you'll notice is if it's neon, which is disappearing, it's not as bright as the LEDs. LEDs now are very bright. This would be red LEDs behind the red faces, so it will come out pretty red. But I do know, like, AT&amp;T is on a time clock. We have that one, because we installed that, so I know the AT&amp;T layers on that same building's on a time clock. I'm trying to think, the Vet Clinic, I think, is on a time clock. We did that one, too. You can tell the difference between a time clock and a photo eye if you drive around in the middle of the day when it's storming. All the lights that are on, we're all on photo eyes. Time clocks automatically come on at different time. So just a difference to compare.
Has the owner expressed interest in doing that one way or the other? Have you talked about that?
Not that I know of. We are hired through a different company. Hibbett Sports is hired, a national sign company, to hire us to do the install.
You're just doing the install, not building the sign?
Correct.
Any other?
You know, one thing that, in whatever direction the planning commission wants to recommend to the council, but if, if there is, I mean, I think it wouldn't be out of order if you were suggesting to recommend the approval of it, to just require that the signs are illuminated during business hours only.
Any other comments or questions?
Hours of business, do you, do we know what their, is it till late at night? Is it till?
I don't know. I know nothing about Hibbett Sports. Typically, if you're going to do, like, a time clock, you have it turned off at 10:00 at night, come back on at 6:00 in the morning, and then that way it's lit. I know we just had our message center out in front there because they were redoing the parking lot, and that's how we had that set up. It turned off at 10:00 at night, came back on at 6:00 in the morning, because that's typically when people are sleeping.
I entertain a motion on the sign appeal.
Craig, is this a final decision? Are we making a recommendation? I'll move to recommend that the sign appeal be granted with the sign being illuminated during business hours?
I have a motion.
I would second.
And a second?
So just for clarification, this would be for the east exterior wall sign?
Correct. I'll add, amend for the east exterior wall sign and taking into account the provisions of the city code relevant to this matter.
So since the appeal is just for the back sign, then they could do whatever they wanted on the front sign? Okay. So I have a motion and second to recommend approval of the sign appeal. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Would you like to walk us through the variance request?
This variance request was actually a petition by Brent Frankhauser. The property in question is located at Sixth Avenue Southwest. Looking at the property in question, for the most part, to the northeast and west, surrounded by single-family residential development. To the south, that's actually still an R1 district, but there's a combination of single-family and the Presbyterian Church. If you look at the variance being petitioned, you could actually look at this under two different code sections. Number one, there's, when you look at front yard setbacks, there's either a minimum setback of 25 feet required, or you can look at adjacent properties and average that setback if it's less than the 25 feet. This particular property, the, the house, it's somewhat confusing. The house itself meets the 25-foot setback, but there used to be a provision in our city ordinance that you could have a five-by-eight entry area encroaching into that 25-foot area. If you look at that front entry area, which is, this is a little bit different than what you got in your packet, but this would reflect that there's actually two doors in this front entryway area, and that portion of the building is 24 feet, 4 inches from the front property line. What is being proposed is to construct a five-foot by nine-foot front deck, or I guess you'd call it a roof-covered porch, to be in front of those existing two entry doors. They'd be, this is not an enclosed porch, but it's basically like a deck with a roof covering on it. So one of the provisions here is relating to the 25-foot setback. Another issue that you can look at relating to front yard decks is if you have a lot that has less than 70-foot a lot frontage, this particular lot has 57 feet, that for uncovered decks without a roof, if the deck is 18 inches or less in height, you can encroach the front yard area eight feet, which, so you can encroach into that 25-foot area, eight feet out from the house. If it's greater than 18 inches, you can encroach the front yard area six feet. So that's, that's a miscellaneous development standard in our, in our zoning ordinance. So whether you want to, in reviewing this, one or the other with the 25-foot setback or the, the roof covering aspect of the, what's being requested here, that's kind of the, the summary of what the variance would involve. I've got some, if you look on the monitor, some existing conditions. I'm assuming that this property is a duplex and has the two front entry doors. If you take a look at more of a side angle with the precast front steps. And as examples, there are some other neighboring properties that have kind of constructed what they're proposing to do with, you know, the front yard stoop to the main entrance and with the, the roof covering and the pillars.
Does that happen to encroach inside the 25-foot then as well?
That, that portion would encroach into the front yard area.
Okay.
And there's another angle of it.
So is that, the yellow house in the background there also have that, is that encroaching?
You know, that, that's an original, that's the, that five-by-eight front vestibule, if you want to call it that, or entryway to the home that used to be, our, previously, our, our front yard ordinance would say, okay, the front exterior wall of this house, the minimum setback was 25 feet. The exception was you could encroach that 25 feet with a five-foot by eight-foot front entry area. So I don't know how this, it's hard to tell. I guess in just looking at this, it appears as though the front exterior wall of this home and the yellow home are relatively close to the same setback.
On the description, it says extend roof line out four feet. I thought I heard you say five.
Well, and I'll let, I'll let Craig address that. I think the, the deck landing itself is four by eight feet. The roof covering would be five feet out, so there'd be a one-foot overhang over the deck. Very similar to what's shown on these drawings.
This one, this example shows that actually the columns coming down on the stoop or the steps, being that these are precast on this house, will they be, new footings put in for the?
Well, the, the, the property under question, the precast stairs would be removed.
They have to be removed, too?
Yeah. And then there would be post footings. It would be built very similar, like a wood deck, and then it would just have the columns and the roof covering the, the proposed deck. I did, I just, I received, you know, through our mailings and publications, I, I did receive one phone call. I don't know the gentleman's address, but his name is Ron Felton, and just kind of questioning what was being proposed, and after I explained it to him, he said he, he didn't have any problem with it. So if you look at this, you know, you need to take into consideration, you know, if the variance is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance, is the variance consistent with a comprehensive plan? Does a proposal put the property to use in a reasonable manner? Are there unique circumstances to the property not created by the landowner? And will the variance have grant, if granted, alter the essential character of the locality in which the property is situated? And as I, the contractor for the project is here, too, if you have any questions of them.
What is your opinion of all your questions you just asked us?
Well, the statutory requirements have changed after some case law, you know, as to what the considerations have to be in approving a variance, and with these different or revised conditions, it presents more flexibility when a variance is recommended for approval versus denying it.
I would agree with that statement.
Yeah.
I said I would agree with that statement.
That didn't answer my question. What's, what's your position on those, those questions? Are you?
My position is that I present the facts to the planning commission, and they are the ones that act on any action to be taken.
Is, there's still an undue hardship portion that has to be shown, demonstrated, correct? So, I mean, the homeowner has to show that there's, that he's going to be, hardship, not necessarily financial, but there's something that's circumstantially is out of his control that prevents him from utilizing his property in the full manner. Is that a correct statement? We don't have a lawyer here, but?
Yep. You know, and it's a very judgmental thing where, I mean, the, the petitioner is wanting to, I guess, enhance the property to provide a roof-covered front entrance to the building, and, you know, do you want to look at that hardship as, when the building was originally constructed? It was constructed too close to the, the prop, I mean, it's?
Yeah, it's interpretation.
Yeah.
But I, I guess we have to remember that as we make any motion, that there has to be some statement of what the situation is.
And if, like I said, Craig Jackal is here, too, he might have some, you know, reason?
If there's no questions for Mr. Hoyam, then we can have Mr. Jackal come to the podium. Could you tell us your name and address for the record, please?
Craig Jackal. Address is 1009 24th Avenue Southwest in Austin.
Okay.
The owner would like to put a covered roof over this to prevent people from going in and out of the house, standing in the rain and the snow and things like that, is the basic request. The deck size will be four by nine, and the roof overhang on the front will be about 10 inches, just under a foot, so will be just under that five-foot requirement that we're asking for. And it will look like that one picture with the posts and the railing.
Very similar.
Mm-hmm. And the steps coming off the front.
Will it be concrete or wood?
This will be all wood.
So the, the walking surface will all be wood?
Yes. Will all be a composite material, but yes, be wood framed with composite material at the top, but?
I'd like to move that we accept the requested variance. I feel like, to me, I drove by the neighborhood, and to me, it, it adds to the overall beautification of the, of the area. The house itself is being worked on and made to look a lot nicer, and I think adding the porch covering is a great addition. I see no reason not to.
It's a, change that to a recommendation, it's a recommendation to the city council for approval of a variance? Okay.
Yeah, I think it's an improvement. I think it's, it appeals, you know, that whole, so I would second that.
Okay. We have a motion that's been made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Jackal. Anything else, Craig?
The only other thing I have is, some of you might know this and others may not, but today is my last day. I'm retiring, and I just want to tell the planning commission, you know, with the group that we currently have on board and the planning commissions that I've dealt with over the last 18 years, I applaud you for taking the time out of your schedule and being involved in, you know, I think, a community that obviously you all care about, and just want to thank you for the opportunities that I've had with you and hope to run into you sometime in my, my next life, so.
Okay. Thank you. And I guess, from the commission, we'd like to thank you for your service to the community and good luck on your retirement or whatever you do from here.
Thanks, Craig.
I'm sorry. Stephen Lang is the Public Works Director, and he has a couple of things to say.
Yeah, just to expand on that.
Yeah, just to expand on that with Craig a little bit, to give the commission an update of where we're at, we are accepting positions currently right now for Planning and Zoning Administrator, a little different title than what Craig currently holds. Some of Craig's duties have been split up to other existing positions throughout the city. Building Official is being delegated to Ron Ripley, current building inspector, and some of the community development side is going to go to the new city administrator. So the new position that will try to replace Craig's shoes will be a Planning and Zoning Administrator. We're accepting applications for that through this Friday, I believe that's February, or July eighteenth, and after that, we will evaluate those applications and hope to get a good qualified applicant on here soon. You know, realistically, it's probably end of August before we have a replacement on board, kind of wishful thinking schedule, so just keep that in mind as questions come up from the planning commission, or if you have any questions, you can call the engineering department, and we'll work through those questions and issues, and same thing with residents as, as they have those questions, those can be directed to the engineering department.
So do we anticipate there'll be no meeting in August, then, probably?
I would anticipate that, unless something major comes up, but most likely, there would not be a meeting in August.
Just delay it until September?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
Motion, second?
Motion and second for adjournment. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Meeting's adjourned.